The mother. Where, where do we want to? But you know, since since we will deal with.
Okay, it's live on YouTube.
Oh, you know, well, they don't. So haven't had though. We're also within my software needs.
But that's all open.
Yeah, so.
I'll get this back to me.
It's glitchy, it's not the greatest. It was a. It was a directive that get done rather than really embedded through. One of the things that we found out is that their support isn't in the East Coast. So when you try to call for help.
Yes.
You know, are you, are you connected with with Cory and his conversation with Salesforce at all tomorrow?
No, but I have talked to Cory separately, we've already sales force because um. The discussion that he and he and I had was, how can we better consolidate everybody's functions like? If we have needs, like said.
Right, you can have the seats.
Parking right that need for me, M W that does for me.
And I'm just. Why so far? Well, because then I'm not squirming against you and I'll be getting up and down.
Okay, so in theory, what do you want, what do you want me to launch on there?
Zoom?
Oh, so.
Yeah, so I sent a link this afternoon in the like email.
Oh, God, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that.
Back to my email.
I I long held the desire to so much.
Oh, it was Waymay Community Association.
This one.
There. And then you'll meet them. What do I need? Uh, join, it's gonna ask for that pass. Right, and over here. I'd let you in.
Yeah, so I guess you want to call.
Admit.
Oh, yeah.
Parker School admissions wants that. Alright, perfect.
See the, but the demo looks like.
So you wanna turn your video off?
That.
Well, that's good, Bonnie, but.
I think it's. Good on the.
Oh, excuse me.
Normally, all the quality people's getting the backpack.
How long have you guys been together?
Well, I've seen all sitting on the end. I know, that's the thing, I just need a person, yeah, normally I'm gonna keep me on.
Um, which we don't have.
Hello.
Let's plan on having a conversation of.
Yeah, I think we need to get all of definitely. Yeah, I think so, yeah, I'm gonna stream. We just need Larry. Because we. So we call finance, finance is both on, probably also. What is the right answer?
Stealing opportunity. And he was already.
Yeah, I can pull one down, I only knew because I was West Coast. It's merit, that's it. And then we find out.
It's on its own. Yeah, I had a feeling. I'm on, uh, all friends with walking now desires.
Well, I I didn't play. Wait, or the rest of your.
Well, everybody. Yeah, I was. And that might be.
So.
You know?
Ready? Yes, because then all it does is everyone sees it's great. Oh, you can just plug it in and just have the zoom window up. Oi.
Pretty sure. Like, you never stop. That one. A rabbi was lost.
Well, it's powering after about forty five minutes. No.
Oh.
Really wrong. I have built a great. What I meant. It's not funny, yes. Hey, is that a piano? That's right there. Something I can do like.
My voice is cynical, I.
I can play, uh.
Not.
Up needs, oh.
Where the experience kind of were better. In this town.
Though.
And same with the work of the. We already have the check. First, I was starting to say the same. What do we have? I have seen. The threat of. They call that like. Because like. Yes.
Alright.
What was that? Oh, no. But then I saw that naughty boy. I was wondering, I don't know which one I. This would be.
Do they not? They were creating.
Okay.
Put the hand. Just see. This, used to greenmail picture that one. Which is good.
I just think that I almost. Never do that. Well, no, it.
Oh, thank you, everyone, we'll get started in just a minute.
You don't. They won't be angry, but.
Started, if you're looking for a seat, there's plenty of seats in here. All the front row, right? Um, so I want to aloha, everyone, welcome and mahalo for joining us this evening for our monthly town meeting. I'm Mary Beth Lechak, who I am a community association president. Our other officers include Nancy Car Smith. Who's the vice president, treasurer Victor Tom, secretary Michaela Bruno, and our directors Riley Smith, who you saw at the front along the paddies of David Greenwell, Chris Wrong, Ryan Nigma, and Lonnie Olson Tom. So, we are excited to have um our early childhood educators visit us today. This is a very exciting presentation. It was something that we did last year and got a really nice response to and wanted to make sure that that information was out there as well. We are streaming live on our Waymay Community Association Facebook page as well as our YouTube channel, which can be found from our website homepage, waymayatown.org. This recording will be made available for viewing. We're happy to have all of you who are watching online and equally happy to welcome all of you who are here in person. It's fantastic, particularly with a topic like early childhood education.
I think your mic and camera might be off.
Oh, that is Michaelis, okay. But we will, people will let me know. Thank you, councilwoman. Um, they will let me know. Um, we are particularly right now with this topic this evening. So many of our families with smaller Kiki are unable to join us at this time, so hello when you are hopefully watching in the future. If you haven't already done so, we encourage you to become a member of the community association. You can do this at the sign and desk, you can do this via our website, or mailing a check to our P O box, which is on your agenda. We are all volunteers, so your membership helps pay for the costs of operating. We appreciate your support and appreciate that Waymay is a community that respects each other even when we don't always agree. I want to give a big thank you to Tutu's house. We appreciate their willingness to let us use this space this month. We have a lot of presenters tonight, so you all need to be aware of David sitting right here making himself rather obvious. He is our timer. Mahalo, David. Um, and as we continue our tradition of honoring and respecting various faith groups that make up our wonderful community, tonight we welcome Rabbi Rosalyn Barak from the Bet Aloha Yilohim congregation. Um, thank you for being here, Rabbi, and please join us for our opening ceremony.
Mahalo. It's an honor. And we're greeting some. We're using the systems which are here now and we're having a wonderful time, services and. We're going to show the master of the universe. Bless this community, this Ohana of Waymaya with wisdom, patience, and compassion. Grant that our spirits remain open as we focus on the tasks ahead and help us approach today with clarity and purpose. And may we remember that our children, our Kiki, are our most precious resource as we devote ourselves to planning for the care of their minds and bodies, for they are our hope for the future. As we focus on. It is written, lo aleh ha'ama chalihro. You are not obligated to finish the word, but neither are you exempt from doing it. And so we put ourselves in the hands of the most holy one of blessing and pray for the energy and strength to continue this meaningful work. Eh aku aku, may God bless you all. Aloha and shalom.
Mahalo, Rabbi. It was lovely to have you join us this evening. Right, up next, we have an update from the Waymay Police Department. We've got Captain Roy Valera as well as Officer Dela Cruz. Um, you might be used to seeing community policing officer advancing here. He is with the mayor tonight. So thank you, Officer Dela Cruz, for jumping in.
Aloha, everyone. Yeah, every time I see teachers, I get nervous. Might be a testament to my history in school, but I think it turned out okay. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to our school resource officer, Puy Delacruz. Before he gets started, I just wanted to mention that being that we have educators in house, we're very fortunate in the South Kohala District to have two community police officers, one in Waikoloa School that's off the Delacruz, and we also have one at Waymay Middle School, that's Officer Edward Lewis. So, uh, we're, we're very fortunate to have them and I'm sure as time goes by, we may get more school resource officers to be in different schools around the island as well. So, go ahead.
Again, yeah, I'm not. A little better looking, I hope. Oh, yeah. I just got some numbers again for you guys tonight. Uh, for the month of March, we had four burglary reports here in South Kohala. Also had two U C T V cases, which is basically stolen vehicles, two stolen vehicles reported for the month of March, and also two vehicle break-ins about in Union Ds. Um. One good thing is we had only six major traffic accidents for the month of March, which was down fifty percent. We had twelve in February. Um. Citation, actually, they're good on citations this last month also. Um, there's a few things that Officer Kabati wanted me to mention also. Uh, coffee on the top. This month is gonna be on the seventeenth down at the Manalani shops. Um, also, you also want me to mention, it's kind of deep to me as well. Um, the Special Olympics torture is in court this year. Oh, every year, but it's on April twenty sixth. And if you guys were aware, um, I've been part of Special Olympics for a while in Kohala, but I actually started Special Olympics here in Waimea um last year, winter second year here in Waimea. Uh, we're doing track and field and along with bocciwo. So I'm a coach with another officer. Um, so yeah, we do have Special Olympics here in Waimea, so if you do have any if uh adults or children that are special needs and you want to participate in something like that, you can reach out to me.
Is there an age range?
There is no age range, yeah.
When does that happen?
Um, right now it's track and field season, so I practice thing every Saturdays. Um, lucky enough, the electric director H P lets us practice actually every day, so we wanted to go out of the state after getting practice on our legit.
Thank you. A couple of announcements, uh, April is tsunami awareness month. And if we remember, uh, April first nineteen forty six with that tsunami that hit the Big Island. Uh, so there are some tips uh in our South Kohala monthly newsletter, which came out an hour ago. So, uh, please, if you haven't already subscribed uh to our newsletter, I have a signup sheet on the signup table out there. Also out there is a Q R code which takes you to our Poli Police website. We have a new website, so please take a look at that. Lots of information and tips on that as well. Uh, I was speaking to Patty Cook earlier and I did want to mention that this year, being that we have the members from our education community, this year is the forty second anniversary of the Dear program nationally. And you know, um, Officer Delacruz is Dear certified, he teaches. Officer Lewis is Dear certified, he teaches there. And also Officer Kabanting is Dear certified and he teaches there. And these three officers uh take care of a good majority of the students, not all, but a good majority of the students within the South Kohala and North Kohala Districts. Uh, so we are providing that curriculum. Here locally in the state of Hawaii, this year we're celebrating forty years of the Dear program in the state of Hawaii. And if I also may mention, I wear a different hat on my off time. And Patty was teasing me because she almost didn't recognize me. Um, but I served as the president for Dear Hawaii, which is a statewide nonprofit organization which supports officers just like Officer Delacruz, Kabanting, and Lewis in their Dear programs uh as they teach the curriculum to the students in the school. So, um, and I've been with Dear, with Dear program. A long time.
Yeah.
Um, in fact, one of my most favorite positions with the police department was school resource officer. And I think Ms. Paula remembers that. That was like twenty years ago. Do you remember that? Holy moly, she was only in like third grade or something. But, uh, so the Dear program is alive and well. It has evolved as the times change, the curriculum change. Uh, nowadays, uh, some of the things in the curriculum include um over the collar uh and prescription medicines, uh cyberbullying. Uh, you know, so there has kept up with the times. Before, it was a seventeen week lesson, seventeen lessons. Um, and it was mostly lecture based. Nowadays, uh, we address different modalities uh in our teaching in school, working in pairs, working in large groups and individual work. So there has kept up with the times. And this year, they are announcing a new evolution of the Dear program yet again. So that is exciting uh in keeping our kids up to date. It went from a solely substance abuse program to more of a decision-making based program. And I, and that is something that the kids can use throughout everyday life, decision making, which is very important. So with that, uh, that's it for our portion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for more info on Dare, come back next month because that is our featured nonprofit next month. Um.
Michaela, can we please have the announcements?
So we have, as usual, a very busy month coming up here in Waymay. Um. Parks and Recreation is going to be, is hosting a hand building ceramics class for Kupuna fifty-five and over. The classes are at the um Waymay Senior Complex Thursdays, one to three P M. They started today and they go through uh the end of June.
Is it going? Uh, not quite.
No.
You do like a, come over to here.
Yeah.
And just do this like, like a slideshow. Come to like the PowerPoint there. Yeah, yeah. Okay, and please slide Joe. Wait, second one?
Yes.
Just go to this one. Alright, next slide, please.
The Waymay Arts Council, first Saturday, community arts classes is this Saturday, April fifth, at the Thelma Parker Library from ten A M to noon. Classes are free, but registration is required. You're interested, call the library tomorrow um to see if there are still slots available for this month.
Perfect.
Slide please. The monthly Narcan giveaway occurs this Saturday at the Waymay K T A at ten A M and next Saturday, April twelfth at the Waikoloa K T A. You can also pick up Narcan here at Tutu's house during normal business hours. Slide please. Lava Man is this weekend in Waikoloa. These are in the maps on the screen, so you're aware there will be bikers and there will be runners on the road. Um, and if you uh go down to A Bay, there will be people swimming in the water.
Next slide.
Next up, we have Saturday Arts in Waymay. This weekend, Kamauila Hardwoods is hosting a make your own charcuterie board workshop. Well, I think you might want to talk, I like the loose. You might want to call them tomorrow to see if seats are still available. Um. It also, I also had the same thought when I looked at this one. While the Firehouse Gallery, Isaac Art Center, and Gallery of Great Things are all open this weekend. Um, so call Kamauila Hardwoods for more information. Um, Kahilo Theater has two upcoming shows, Mono Music Quartet on Sunday, April sixth at two P M. I saw a little clip of them on Hawaii News Now this morning. They seem very, very good. And then Everybody Loves the Honoka High School Jazz Band, they are playing next Friday, April eleventh at seven P M. Next slide. The Waymay Food Truck Family Friday event is next Friday, April eleventh, from four P M to eight P M on the front lawn of the Tech Observatory. Slide please. Next Saturday is the annual Lapo Hoi Hoi Music Festival from ten A M to five P M at Lapo Hoi Hoi Point State Park. Lapo Hoi Hoi Point Beach Park. In addition to the music, there will be crafts, food booths, and silent auction. Tickets are fifteen dollars pre-sale, twenty dollars at the door. The entire event is a fundraiser for um Lapo Hoi Hoi Charter School. Next slide. As you may have noticed, along the by, along Ala Ohea Road, the Blue Zone, the Ala Ohea Project is complete with twelve new benches now installed along the road. Um, join us for a very special blessing led by Doctor, uh Father David of Saint James Church on Monday, April fourteenth at ten A M, starting at the corner of Ala Ohea Road and Pukalani Road. Um, the blessing will walk past, down the path and bless each bench. We hope to see you all there. A huge mahalo to all of the amazing community sponsors, supporters, and donors who helped make this project possible. You have any questions about that tonight, you should see Nancy in the back. Next slide, please. Waymay Country School is having their plant sale and garden market on Saturday, April nineteenth, from nine A M to noon at the school. Slide. The monthly Annunciation Catholic Church Food Pantry occurs on Tuesday, April twenty second, eight A M until pow. Want to make a note that it's now once a month. It had been twice a month. Next slide. It is never too early to think about summer plans for your Kiki. Wayman Middle School will host their twenty twenty-five Summer Tech Camp, June ninth through June twentieth, from eight A M to two P M for students in grades six through nine. There is no cost. Breakfast and lunch are included. Contact the school for more information. And we slide. Um, grade six through nine. Slide. Slide. Save the date for the twenty twenty five Hawaii County four H Livestock Show and Auction on June thirteenth and fourteenth. All right, thank you. That we are all proud with our announcements. Up next, this month's um nonprofit spotlight is Hamakua Kohala Health. Were visited by John White and Doctor Leanne Campbell, who will talk about the health center's community survey and K P vaccinations. As always, we will pass the basket during the presentation for those inspired to make a donation.
Very good. Aloha and good evening, folks. It's just a, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for the invitation tonight. My name is John White. I'm the CEO of Hamakua Kohala Health Center. We're a federally qualified health center, a little bit different. Type of uh healthcare provider uh around the country and also on the big island as well. So we do primary care. We do behavioral health, we do dentistry, adult and pediatric for both, for all of our practices, and in particular Medicaid dentistry. And Medicaid programs throughout uh all of our practices. We're the certified D F A Way Healing Center, we have cultural practices uh as well. We do. Care coordination, navigation, transportation. If you need it, then we can do it. We're here for you, and it's without regards of anybody's ability to pay. We have a federal grant that helps us fund all that work and the people and the infrastructure to make that happen. So. Thank you very much. Tonight, as you walked in, you saw our little booth. We're uh conducting our community's health needs assessment. So uh if you don't mind taking the survey, it's fastest to do the Q R code. Piece of paperwork works as well, and if you do fill it out and put on paper, just drop it in the basket. That helps us better know what you need and how we can serve you. So. I'll stop because I want to introduce Doctor Leanne Campbell, pediatrician uh with our clinic, and she's going to talk a little bit about the immunization.
Everyone, thank you so much for having me. My name is Doctor Campbell. I'm a pediatrician. I've worked with Hamakua Kohala Health for about two years, and I've practiced as a pediatrician since twenty four. And you know, just briefly, I think we all know that childhood vaccines are the best and most effective way to protect our children against lots of different infectious diseases. Vaccines have an extensive testing before they come to market, and then there's ongoing um safety data that happens while vaccines are being given to populations. And our current um US schedule is um scientifically designed to provide maximum protection with minimal. When we think about vaccines, sometimes I think it's helpful to think about what would be a world without vaccines. And so the Royal Health Organization, um, in honor of fifty years of their expanded. Program on vaccination, did a survey looking at how it's impacted infant mortality. So back in nineteen seventy four, before vaccines expanded. Globally, the under one mortality was about one in ten babies would not survive. Three centers for making babies. And we fast forward to twenty twenty four, and that number globally is about twenty six out of a thousand. For the United States, it's about five. There's different factors that have contributed to that, but it's estimated about forty percent of that survival is due vaccines, and that's. Um, calculates out to about a hundred and fifty four millions of lives that have been saved. US did similar modeling data between ninety three, nineteen ninety three to twenty twenty three, we estimate we've saved about one point one million lives. Which is just incredible to think about the number of kids who survived that first year of life, got to grow up and have productive lives because of this amazing. Most American kids do get vaccines. About ninety percent of children get the routine series, though of course we know that there's vaccine hesitancy. Here in Hawaii, when you look at children under the age of two, we rank about seventeen in the nation, so could be better, could be worse. Since twenty nineteen to present, certainly vaccine hesitancy has increased. Hawaii as a whole has seen an increase in them, but religious exemptions starting about two percent pre pandemic to now around four percent. And this is of course a concern because as vaccine levels drop, we can see more vaccine presentable illnesses like the measles. Um, cases that are happening on the mainland. We know we need a community level of ninety five percent to prevent vaccine, measles outbreaks from continuing. Right now in Hawaii amongst kindergartners are about ninety percent, so we're not quite there. Um, and it is important because measles, it can be extremely serious. One in five. People who get measles wind up hospitalized, and that's especially concerning for the outer islands where we don't have. Even the people who survive measles can sometimes have long term, you know, hearing loss, long term neurologic complications, so it's really quite serious. So then I think it comes to like, what can we do? Um, and I think if you have children, you can make the choice to vaccinate our kids if we're encountering children. In our orbit trying to encourage them to get vaccinated is important. Um, sometimes people I think wonder about system vaccines. The vaccines for program, vaccines for children program or V F C program was started in nineteen ninety three. Provides federal funding to vaccinate kids who don't have insurance, who are underinsured, who have Medicaid insurance, and really has helped to expand that. We participate in the V F C program. That's the vaccines in a nutshell. If you have any questions later, please help me.
You've mentioned federally funded, so. If uh, because of the funding, oh, are you going to be able to continue though?
Well, from a vaccine perspective, Hawaii has introduced legislation trying to. Protect the funding if they lose control. I mean, of course, V F C program is massive, so if that were dramatically cut, that could be a problem.
And what about the, the central work in Hawaii?
I'm sorry.
This, no, Hamakua Health, how would that affect you?
Well, it's, you know, you're, you're talking about the federal changes overall. Well, we're, I mean, we have between Medicare, Medicaid, our base grant. It's probably eighty percent of our entire uh cash flow in the course of the year. So if there was something to change fundamentally. We would have to adjust in some way. The, the, there are a couple of things on the horizon. One would be. The reduction of eligibility for the Medicaid program. When we expanded during the Affordable Care Act, we added a. Books that are up to a hundred and thirty eight percent of the federal poverty level. If it rolls back to a hundred percent, that's about. A hundred and fifty thousand people statewide in the state of Hawaii to become uninsured essentially, and we join that band of folks who. Don't have employer base and they're not in a Medicare or traditional Medicaid program either. So it's tough for health centers, two things. One, it doesn't matter whether you have insurance or not. I mean, definitely it helps us be sustainable. But we, there's a fund that's uh, that's been established at the state level to pay us for taking care of you. In the case that there was a reduction in coverage overall. Uh, but in general, sliding B scale based on your income, so if you can pay, we'd ask you to, and if you can't, then no problem, we'll take care of you. So, uh, but we want to be here forever. Our sixtieth anniversary is next year, and we got to be here for sixty four years, and. It's going to take a team left to make that happen. Fortunately, I think Hawaii is very friendly towards. Healthcare and a, a collective approach to things, and we really appreciate that. Four locations, by the way, we have one in Kapaha, we have one here in Waimea, Honoka, and then school-based health center in Lapo Hoi Hoi.
Thank you.
Yeah.
John, if you're experiencing cuts, I hope you'll tell the community.
Of course.
Pick up and perhaps put that.
For sure. So far, so good. There's been a lot of, the number one thing I'm worried about right now is the chaos. With all of the reorganizations and. Uh, it, it that's effectively the same thing as cutting your funding if you can't get paid. Because the people are different, the agencies have reduced force, the computer systems are not working, whatever. So I'm, I'm really worried about that. Our, our sponsoring agency, the Health Resources and Services Administration is part of H H S. And it will become part of the new E H A, the uh Administration for uh Healthy America. And we, we don't know at all what that looks like really. So just trying to be agile, resilient, and we just do what we do every day, and that's take care of people. Yes, sir.
Uh, do you guys have urgent care or just appointments on?
We, we don't have an official urgent care, and we have walking slots that are available during the day.
A lot of same day appointments. Yeah, but it's, yeah, not like an urgent care.
There are a couple physician practices that are full, being um, the, the doctor can only take care of so many patients on a routine basis. But our average wait time or openness of schedule is about one day. So for the most part, you should be able to walk in, and we're open until it's a Latin.
Well, I'm kind of has raised.
Sticks of baskets when it's shut down. But try to make it after school hours and after what happens.
Yeah, one of the times to offer their emergency.
We, uh, yes, so we are, we are a, a lessy, we're a tenant on the overall. Boy Health Services Corporation camps there. So the emergency department is right next door to the health center. And it's a, it's a, not as full service as it is here at Queens Circle, but it's still available and not available. Not at all. We're just, we're a separate five oh one C three, our own pre standing.
All right, thank you all so much. So many good questions.
Thank you.
They will vote here on the end.
Please, if you have a question or a comment or anything, or if we let me know, contact me directly.
Thank you. All right, we are joined this evening by Councilwoman Heather Kimball, who will share a brief update from the council. Councilman James Houston sends his regards. He is also with the Mayor's North Kohala Event. Um, but he, along with Councilwoman Kimball, will join us next month for a longer version of our regular council updates, so.
Councilwoman. Yes, James and I did hurry up, so we made sure that we kind of agreed on what we wanted to cover today. Um, I did notice on the agenda that there's no time next to my update, so.
Five minutes.
I figured. Well, um, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the, the county budget because that, we are in that process right now. Um, I know that there's been some questions about federal issues, so I will be sure to speak to that. I did do another trip to D C. Um, since the last time I was there, and I have one more coming up at the end of the month. Um, and then I want to just briefly talk on, on transient accommodation rentals because we're starting that up again. So. Um, every year the mayor is required to provide us with a budget as of March first, so we've had that in our hands for. A little over a month now, and then we start next week with our hearings with each of the departments. Um, to hear about their program objectives and how their budgets align with those objectives. So, um, this year's budget uh is nine hundred and thirty eight million. It is uh just a slight increase from last year's budget, about two percent or seventeen million. Um, most of that increase, so we, we're required to have a balanced budget. Our revenue has to match expenditures. Um, most of that increase is coming from increased values and property taxes, additional building, things like that. We have um. Some increased collections from transient accommodation tax as well as. Uh, carryover balance from unfunded positions from the last year, so the, or, I'm sorry, unfilled positions. So these were budgeted. They were not filled, and so we have that carryover. Um, then we do have some offsets that come from a reduction, anticipated reduction in federal funds or intergovernmental funds. So either those that come directly to the county or those that pass through the state and then come to the county. I think um our biggest hits that we're looking at in the, the um Hawaii County budget is with mass transit. Most likely a ten million dollar reduction in the mass transit budget right now. And then in the housing sector potentially in the voucher program. So, um, those are of course uh concerning. On the expenditure side, um, public safety is our, still our biggest expenditure for you guys and fire and all of that. Um, so that's about twenty three percent of our total spending. And then um we're, we have additional um increases in our recreation, so we are adding another four million toward parks and rec facility maintenance and upgrades. I think is great. Um, the mayor has proposed a twenty million dollar. Transfer from the general fund to our capital improvement funds for some capital improvement projects. And then um, we're also looking at a debt service increase. So when we borrow money, obviously we have to pay interest on it, just like you guys do when you borrow money. And so we are expecting about an eight million dollar increase in our debt service this next year. That's going to be important for something I talk about in just a minute. Um, so the budget review scheduled starts, as I said, next week. Um, so each day beginning on April eighth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh. At nine o'clock, you can come and testify on the budget. And I really encourage you to do this. If there's something about the county that we, a service we provide. You want to ensure gets funded or something we don't provide yet that you want us to consider funding. We don't know unless we hear from you. And so. Uh, this is available on the finance website, and in fact, I would actually check it out. They've done something different this year. They've actually put a video up there that goes over the budget process for folks. So we're trying every year to make the budget process more accessible. Um, but on Tuesday, April eighth, we have. Is that right? No, it's Tuesday. Um, we have the mayor, we have the office of management, we have finance, housing, fire, civil defense, and human resources. On the ninth, we have police, prosecuting attorney, animal control, corporation counsel, information technology, and liquor control. The tenth will be mass transit, parks and recreation, office of aging, autism's office, county clerk. That's where we are, um, environmental management, and then the last day will be public works. Research and development, Oscar, and the office of plan. So, um, you're always, of course, really if uh able to submit written testimony um for any of these. In addition to those budgetary reviews. Um, on May twentieth at five o'clock, we will have our special hearing around any proposed um. Uh, tax changes um in terms of the tax classes or track, sorry, tax rates. And then there are also meetings on May second and June fifth. Uh, we have to adopt the final budget by June thirtieth, so we'll be busy with all of that. Again. All of this information, including the budget itself, um, which I kind of say is in not a very easy to read format, but it's there. Um, on the, the finance website. Um, so going back a little bit. To, like I said, we're expecting a thirty million dollar reduction in intergovernmental revenue. That is probably. About a twenty five percent reduction in all intergovernmental revenue that we typically expect. Um, when I was last in D C um for the National Association of Counties meeting. Um, the main things that we in the counties are concerned about are um, um, changes to FEMA. Um, so there is a proposal by the White House to completely reorganize, if not abolish FEMA. Obviously, in a state that has just about every hazard or emergency that you can imagine. Um, having FEMA dissolved is particularly concerning. Um, at this point, they're proposing a task force that will evaluate that. The counties want a seat at the table, so that's what we're lobbying for right now is to make sure that we have a seat at the table. Um, the second thing that we're worried about is reductions in Medicaid. Um, while we as a county don't actually provide health services, many counties out there do. Um, but in our case, we're concerned about what that might mean at the state. Reductions in their funding to provide those services and then how that results. Maybe in completely different areas, but reducing the money that the state passes through to us at the county. Um, obviously also concerned about reductions in HUD funding, section eight, other subsidized housing programs. That are obviously really critical to us here. Um, the last area that I want to mention is, um, I mentioned I would talk about debt service again. We just borrowed a whole bunch of money, if you didn't know. We borrowed uh three hundred and thirty seven million for a wastewater treatment plant. We're going to have to borrow a bunch more for P L K D, uh, Mauna Keleu, Pahala. Um, over the next few years, we're going to have quite a bit of wastewater funding. Um. We are required um to have a limit on how much debt service we have, so how much interest we're paying overall. Um, one is a statutory limit, the other is a, a limit from the bonding agencies. The people says you've got good credit, you don't have good credit, right? We are right at that threshold right now for the, the bonding. Um, and so. One of the other things that the feds are proposing is making municipal bonds, bonds to governments, borrowing, the borrowing that we do. That's currently tax free. We don't have to pay taxes on that income. Sense. They're proposing that it would no longer be tax free. So you can imagine what that's going to do for us who have these. Obligations, and one of these wastewater products we have to pay for. We are under consent decree from the E P A. So if we are pampered in our ability to borrow and we get over that threshold where we lose our credit rating essentially. Um, we're going to be in, in some challenging. So, um, all of these things, again, like I said, have been advocating for. On behalf of the State Association of Counties, and of course on, on behalf of our county as well. Um, headed back there at the end of this month to talk a little bit more with um our congressional delegation about uh congressional delegate uh. Congressional designated funds, their earmarks. Um, as one of the ways to address some of the funding needs that we have. In the county, um, we have not done, I will say, as well as other counties across the state in bringing in those congressionally directed funds. And so they're providing me some guidance with how we can better improve our efforts to go this way, you know. Um, and then the last thing I wanted to mention, and if I have time for questions, I'll be happy to take them. Um, we are restarting the legislation around transient accommodation rentals. There will be a webinar on April seventeenth at five P M. Uh, talking about our first bill. So if you recall, we had Bill one twenty one, it was a massive piece of legislation. I believe it was seventeen pages and it's final form. Um, we have broken it up into three different sections. The first section, which we intend to introduce on May sixth. Will just be a straight up registration for short term vacation. So. Bill one twenty one had some language about where they're allowed and what was permitted and all those kinds of things. For us, the most important right thing right now is to just know who's doing what where. And so the first bill is a straight up. Registration, there's no land use component to it. Um, there is a, a hosting, hosting platform compliance piece that means B R V O. Airbnb giving us their data every month about what they have listed on their website, so we can share compliance. Um, re, the reasons that is. Reasons that is important, so we can collect our fair share of transient accommodation tax. We can make sure that we're getting the property tax class right for those folks that are offering transient accommodation rentals. There'll be two more bills that follow that do talk about the land use piece and protect possibly vacation destination areas. But we're looking at those after R and D provides us with their economic assessment that they've been working on and should have a draft out in May. With that, that covers everything very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we'll have lots more time. You can ask Councilwoman Kimball questions. All right. So, and the reason for that is I'm very excited to welcome our speakers this evening, all of whom are integral members of the community because they focus on our very youngest community members, our pre-kindergarten babies. We're going to start off with Angela Thomas and her team from the Hawaii County Early Childhood Development Center before moving on to short presentations from each of those childhood centers here in Waimea. We'll have time for questions at the end. So up first is Angela and her team.
So thanks for having us. We came last year, we talked a little bit about sort of where we were and where we got started. But this year, I want to tell you what we're doing, so I'm very happy to move forward. Thank you. So the first thing I did when I started in twenty-two was to create a early childhood community profile. It's great bedtime reading, but it collects, it has all the data about how our children are doing in the county. So this is what we use to make our decisions on what we needed to do, what the issues were, and to support families. So anyway, next slide. So this is the population based on the report that came out in twenty-three. And you can see where our, based on the six districts in our community, we have about two hundred thousand people living on Hawaii Island. And next slide. So then, if you look at the zero to seventeen population, it's about just less than a quarter of that, forty-three thousand across the districts. But what's interesting is both in the island population and in the zero to seventeen population, Kona district has the largest numbers, and then Kuna, I mean, yeah, no, then Hilo and then Kuna. And they, they give for both of those two, but it changes with the zero five. So now it's Kona, Kuna, Hilo. So we have a real growing population in this district. So knowing that, these are the providers that we have licensed across the island in their different communities. So for instance, I added up Kona, or the communities in Kona, there are thirteen. That would be Captain Cook and Holo Aloa and Kailua Kona. And then in Hilo, we have nineteen. And this just talks about the number of centers there are, doesn't say how many children are enrolled in each of the centers. So some centers may be larger and others may be smaller. But just to give you an idea of what's going on, in Kamewa, we call Waimea, we have six. And actually, almost everybody's here tonight to represent. And Honakau, we've invited Paula to join us because she has a lot of connections to our, our work here in Waimea. So, oh wait, back on. So one of the things I wanted to say is basically we have one point, one, one space for every four point five children from zero to five across the island. So there's a definite shortage of spaces for kids. So why is the county doing anything around education? We're not really doing education, we're doing early childhood. So it's out-of-school time, so it's preschool and after, before and after school. That's, that's where we are. We're, I've been made clear, you stay in your lane, you don't interfere with the DOE, but we will support them. So like, I'm real happy about your EOL classroom and your teacher coming up. So anyway, I just wanted to give you an idea of how deficit we are in spaces for kids. Okay, next slide. So one of the things that we're working on is changing the outcomes for kids going into kindergarten. So we're trying to support children from zero to five, which are on my charge. But also, two years ago, we started doing what's called kindergarten entry assessment. It's a statewide assessment that's given to every kindergarten child in, within the first month of school. So the DOE hasn't had any effect on them yet necessarily, because they're coming from all over the community. So this is where we have some input. So what you're looking at is twenty, twenty-three score, yeah, twenty-four is this year. So this is August of twenty-three, so that was last year. And so we have basically only twenty, twenty-nine point six percent of our kindergarteners are ready for kindergarten, which is like the less than thirty percent. Okay, so we have all the different, those are school complexes. So for instance, if you're looking at Pohopoh, Pohopoh also includes Keone Pohopoh. So it's not just that that school, it's the entire complex. So Waimea, for instance, would be in the Honakau complex. So what you're looking at is the green is that they're demonstrating proficiency, that means they're ready. So apparently, we have some future Olympians in Hilo and Hala. But the yellow is approaching, so they're not ready, they're getting there. And then the orange is a very polite term for saying they're not even close, probably merging. Okay, so then we did the test again, well, before we change. One of the things that is good for us is that, I mean, it looks dismal, but in, in the past, all schools did their own testing. So like preschool, kindergarten teachers would say, okay, we want these certain questions asked of our incoming kindergarteners. And so when we're as early childhood people, we're like, well, where is the finish line? Where do you want kids to be when they go to kindergarten, socially, emotionally, cognitively? We never knew. So unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on how you want to look at it, we now have a state, across the state, normative test. So whether we like it or not, at least we all are, it's apples to apples. So this is what we have. So I thought the scores would change a little bit in the next year because teachers were taught how to do the assessment, and maybe they'd be better at it. So we can look at the scores for next year, and that is just current year. Yeah. So we have some work to do. That's why we have a whole team and congressional people here tonight.
Is that done in the private schools or just public?
Public. And I think some charters, some charters are doing it as well, but they're not reported here because this is a public school. Okay. So knowing this, and with the, are the research and development and their economics development section, they have put money together in ARCA funding. They've allotted money for us to use for changing outcomes, creating more capacity and all of that. So with the community profile and knowing these scores, we put together what I'm calling an ARCA triangle, which gives you an idea of how we've chosen to spend the funding. So my boss is here tonight, so already, you know, say good things. Okay. So this is the work we started, okay. And I'm really excited to announce this, because we've, we've been doing this already. And I, we're at the point now, it took two years to figure out what we wanted to do and get the grants out, and now we're doing stuff. So we have no idea how. So this is how we decided to do it. So the first thing is, so we have county funding, which is the ARCA money. And then we also applied for a PBG, this preschool development grant, birth to five. Yeah, preschool development, yeah, grant birth to five. So we applied for that through P twenty at the University of Hawaii, and we were able to get that too. That was about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So if you see where that is on this, here, maybe you can see that the, you know, sort of estimate how the big money is spent down here. But that's our funding structure. Okay, so the first, the first triangle is capacity development. And you can do the next one. Okay, so this is Miami put aside for family childcare startups. So this is where Stephen is going to have a conversation with us. But we're looking at starting, if family, I mean, this is Chelsea's slide. Yeah, I want to do this, because I took all the glory last year.
She was like, be prepared to talk, and then she didn't let me talk, but I'm fine with that. So, hi, I'm Chelsea Ching, I'm from Friends of the Future, and the early childhood program leader. Is that right? My boss is back there. I'm the, one of the doers. Aganda said we had all the women in there doing things, and so I'm one of the doers. We received funding from the county. I was with that, with the counties, I think. But we, there's money put in there for family childcare startups. So what we're trying to do is increase the lots here on the island for.
The next slide, there you go.
Oh, well, you don't need to read that. We're trying to increase the spots. So we have some startup funding if you want to do a family childcare or know somebody who wants to do at-home family childcare. We help with the infrastructure, say you need a fence, you need a new fridge, you need better flooring for your childcare space. We help with that, we have business startup funds. So if there's any fees associated with getting licensed, so family childcare, you have to be licensed through Department of Human Services. To babysit, it is illegal to babysit children without a license. Oh, sorry, we're not babysitting. I'm looking at them and they're like, what childcare? We're sitting on babies. Babies if you're licensed.
Talk about the, the requirements.
Okay, so our requirements for that is that you have to take two children under the age of two. We have a huge lack in infant toddler care here on the island. So you have to take, receive our funding for two children under the age of two. You also have to participate in the USDA food program, which is a great reimbursement program. So we can ensure that our kids are getting good food while they're being cared for. That's that off. Also, shared service platform, Hatch, who is a partner with us that I'm working closely with. They have a great shared service platform. You also have to do some training too, so it's not just, we don't know anything about kids. You get the basic training to run a business and work safely with children. So that's that one.
Okay, thanks. Okay, the PDG is the grant that we applied for, and there are five specific places that we're working in. Sue Delacruz is our program leader for this particular piece of the triangle. Can you do the next slide? Thanks. Okay, so we're increasing family knowledge with, through a media campaign and our social media platform. We're a mixed delivery system training. So April fifth, which is this Saturday, we have literacy training at Kehu Theater, which is all about the four domains of the KDA, which we spoke about earlier, and supporting families who have children that are zero to five, developing language and literacy skills, early literacy skills. And then we have an annual training for all providers in, on the Big Island. Well, and people come from all over the state. It's an Hawaii Island Early Childhood Conference, and that's September the eleventh, the fifteenth, and that's where I met. Let's gamble last year. Okay, then mixed delivery system, our family fair. We just had a Pohopoh Family Fair, which is a community that we're working in yesterday, it was amazing. And then Pula Kalihula, which is the West Hawaii Consortium for Early Childhood, does an Ohana Kakee Fair in Waipoula, and we're helping to support them with funding. That also is amazing. Maximizing family engagement, we're doing a survey, which we're trying to get a thousand people responding to. So if you have children from zero to five, we'd like, yeah, Bonnie, we're going to send it to your school. And then across-agency collaborations required by the grant that people, that we're getting people to talk to each other, which I'm doing in my role anyway with the county, but so it was really easy to write that into the kind of proposal. And so, and then engaging with state and local conversations. So we are, we are, and I am very busy with Lieutenant Governor and her Red Cake Initiative, so that we can make sure that we, I want to say get our fair share, but that we are at the table as she's making these decisions. So that's part of the grant. Great, thank you. Okay, the infrastructure is just for staffing and whatever costs Dennis has to pay for Patty and I to exist from the county. Okay, the next one. The workforce, okay, this has two parts. So there's the Shamaan scholarships, and there's also the training. So the first one up is Patty. Can we, next slide, thanks.
I'm Patty Price, my mom is Sue Delacruz. Some of you might recognize me, I was just a little tiny kid then. But now I am managing our scholarship program. It's for anyone who is interested in getting their early childhood education certificate or in, like, if they are EAs looking to renew their CDA or to get certified. The scholarship will pay for their associates, bachelors, or masters, either through Kualat Community College or Shamaan University. Shamaan is special because it also offers a Montessori curriculum program. And all of these classes are aligned too. So if you have EAs in your classroom who, or people who are still working, they can balance out that schedule by choosing, of course, what that works for them. The only requirements really for this program is that you live in the county and that you are going to work or are working for an early childhood program. Yes, so when I came on in November, we already had Shamaan University up and running. And so we have nineteen students that we started working through this scholarship program. And then we recently joined with Hawaii Community College, and we are funding sixteen this turn, starting with our associates in early childhood.
Okay, another thing I do is apprentice trips and professional development grants. So Angela already mentioned that we do a yearly conference for early childhood. They're professionals, not babysitters. Our next conference will be at the King Kamea Hotel on September twelfth and thirteenth. We've actually been doing this for like fifteen years. How many? This is going to be like our sixteen conference. Which is great, and we keep on growing every year. We hope to see about two hundred twenty-five. Majority of our folks come from the Hawaii island, but we do have folks that fly in from the outer islands. We do bring in Kamea presenters and try to keep everybody up to date on national trends and what's going on in the UCU community. As for apprenticeships, I want to say, we just started this apprenticeship program for early childhood educators. And we have two of our schools that are participating right now. We have Paula, Paula has one apprentice, and we have this Bonn Montessori Education Center of Hawaii, who has two apprentices. So we're really excited, that program, we're trying to help increase the quality care of our workforce in the early childhood. There's a lack of teachers right now, and all the preschools are kind of shaking their heads, like, yeah. We need more workers, we need more kids, or, so we can take more kids kind of thing. So we're really trying to build capacity in that field. So if you have any questions or you want to be an apprentice, you may call.
Yeah, I think the apprenticeship program is doing two things. It's all, it's bringing new people into the field who have not been there before to train them, but it's also training up existing faculty. So either way, we're supporting the field. Okay, the next one is capacity building. So basically, I was trying to give grants to childcare centers who want, would increase their capacity by taking more children or enrolling infants and toddlers. So we were able to award two grants, next slide please. One is to Akahia Nature Institute, which is a fairly new preschool out in the Kona side. And the other one is to the YWCA preschool, they're building a modular classroom which is going to take thirty-five more children. And then Akahia was doing another family childcare. Okay, thank you, next slide. Okay, our community work, this is what I'm most excited about and where we've obviously put the most money. The first thing is we have a reach-out-and-read program, which I'm going to let. I do, okay, but I wanted to announce that we have just brought on Hamakua Health as our, one of our new providers. So what it is, I'll let her explain it, but it's very exciting because they literally just passed their training.
So the Reach Out and Read Literacy Program is a program that recruits providers that do wellness checks for children five and under. And during those checks, these providers are trained in the Reach Out and Read Program, and they teach parents and, or families how to engage their child in a book. So we, at the county, provide books to these healthcare providers, and then the providers then reach out to the families during the visits. And it's really cool, we actually have like four thousand, three thousand books upstairs out of the total ten thousand that we started, fifteen thousand, that's right, that we started with. We are in the process of going five thousand five hundred more books. And we have fourteen providers from the whole island. We did just recruit Hamakua Health, so that's Honakau, and eventually Kahala, and maybe Waimea. And then we have Hawaii Island Community Health Center, which is in Hilo, along the east and west coast. We have Kaiser Kona and Kaiser Hilo and Kaiser Waimea, so we've got those. I'm missing the big one. Oh, and then Paniala Pediatrics, right across.
All right, uh, parking lot here in Honolulu Pediatrics and Kona as well. So this program is really cool. I hear a lot of good feedback from the providers when I deliver them books. I deliver about every two months about two hundred books to the providers.
You know, you've given out a little over twelve thousand books across there. Yeah, we're really proud of that. And Dennis is gonna get our next order here, okay?
She's ordered.
Okay. Okay, the next slide is a little bit about Pahoa Reads. Pahoa, um, our work in the community has, we've selected Pahoa, which is the Pahoa complex. So it's Pahoa and um Komi Koko Elementary Schools. And what we're trying to do is a comprehensive continuum of support. Um, starting upstream with newborns and working down through um to the entrance to kindergarten. And we have um a number of partners who have come together, both health and education and um social services to support uh Kakese and families um to do better by kindergarten. So I'm really excited about this project. We um we provided a grant, but we have a leader, Michelle Painarabaki, is our um uh community leader and she's, she is sent, it's really clever. She was, she's the retired principal of Pahoa Elementary School. So she knows everybody in the community. And what we like so much about it is it's really community driven. It's the people in the community and the resources in the community who are in the charge. So we're very happy to be able to support them. And we're looking for some really positive outcomes in terms of data collection soon. Okay, the next slide. Okay, and then the other thing is our big um uh event on, I don't know how big it's gonna be, but it's at Kehu Theater. There's a lot of seats. So if anybody's interested in coming or knows people who have children from zero to five, um, the Department of Education's Early Childhood Specialist will be here. She's the one that selected the uh K E A. She is the one that is training the teachers on how to assess the children. And um she will be here to do this presentation class activity. So we'll buy in lunch if anybody's coming.
This Saturday.
This Saturday, yeah. Ten to about three. So anyway, and that's it. Now we have our, yeah, that's it. And then um, I wanna thank um Susan Maddox, who's our fiscal, I don't know, manager. Yeah, exactly, yeah. Because without Susan, we wouldn't be able to do all this stuff anymore. And so we're on the next slide. But um, so thank you, everybody. And then um, we're really lucky here in Waimea to have such a diverse array of options. Um, one of the things we are taking credit for, we, we had a little um get together before Sylvia Luke became uh Lieutenant Governor. It, it was the weekend after literally that she said when she won the primary, I'm gonna work on early childhood. And I'm like, I called her up. So we had a little get together up here in Waimea and Orange, and all the different providers were here. We got to explain to her what it's like on the ground. And one of the things we taught her was it's not universal preschool, it's universal access preschool. And the reason for that is that there are so many options and parents should have a choice of what kind of program their child goes to. So we are very fortunate here in Waimea to have almost every option um on the list. So you don't sit on children though, it's childcare, you don't babysit, yeah, it's not daycare, you don't care for days. Okay, well, thank you.
Mahalo, mahalo so much. So we will hear from these providers. They have roughly five minutes each, and I've done it in roughly alphabetical order. Um, and so up first is Trisha Bell from Maimea Preschools. They have both an um school in Pa'ilo and Waimea. So Pa'ilo is what got you first. Take it away.
Aloha, mai kaku. Hello, aloha, Trisha Bell. So I am Trisha Bell. And hopefully, pu'u au i mahale aina auha, ma'i akau. So I am the vice principal of the North Hawaii region. Uh, so just kind of a general overview of Kehu schools. Uh, we were founded by um Kelly E. Burns, one of the children by her will. And she is the great granddaughter of Kehu. Uh, we are part of a larger Kehu schools educational system. Uh, within Kehu preschools, we serve over seventeen hundred uh three and four-year-old Kakee um at thirty preschool sites um on Hawaii Island, Maui, Oahu, and Kona. So out of those thirty preschool sites, I take care of three preschools here in the North Hawaii region. Um, so I have one preschool out in Pa'ilo, which is called the Hama Kua preschool. I have two classrooms out there uh with forty Kakee, sorry, totals, but it's twenty classroom. Um, I also oversee Kohala uh preschool, which is in Havi on Kohala Mountain Road. I also have two classrooms out there, uh, total forty Kakee, which is a really large classroom. And then, of course, here in Waimea, right by the Department of Hawaiian Homeland's office, um, I have four classrooms there, uh, total eighty Kakee. Um, so um, our, we are a Hawaiian culture-based, Christian-based curriculum, which we call Eola. And at Kehu schools, Eola um the curriculum um actually runs from pre-K all the way up to twelve-three. But here at our preschool here in um North Hawaii, uh, we um have mixed age in our classroom. So we have trees and four-year-olds in our classroom, and we get them ready for kindergarten. But we use uh Hawaiian culture to um teach, we teach Kakee through culture. Uh, let me see. So our application uh deadline has actually passed. Um, it was January thirty-first, but anybody can still apply. Um, you can go online to our website at p s b e dot edu and kind of look for um admissions and all online. Um, anybody that applies now would be directly based on our willingness. Because we are getting ready to invite for our twenty-five, twenty-six school year. In fact, it's time to come out next week. And um we start the whole school year out like everybody else um with all these nice parent meetings and getting them ready, uh, giving them their packet, getting them ready um health, health-wise, making sure all their immunizations are all up to date, all that good stuff. Um, let me see, what else? We also all offer financial aid. If your Kakee is accepted to Kehu schools, uh, we do offer financial aid um by application, of course, this needs based. Um, and Kehu schools uh preference is given to children of Hawaiian ancestry um as permitted by law. But anybody can apply at all. Everybody is welcome, everybody's welcome. Uh, let me see, I think that was two hours, yes. So yes, we are not daycare. We are a preschool. Um, so our hours, we open our doors at seven o'clock and we close our doors at five. So actually from seven to eight-thirty will be our arrival period. So we have, we give our parents an hour and a half to bring their Kakee. Eight-thirty-one is considered party and at eight-thirty-two, that's where we actually start our people, we actually start our kids. School, the school day um runs until two-thirty. So the earliest that Kakee can be picked up is two-thirty. And uh, but we do have after-school um services, uh, which is mostly enrichment up until five o'clock. So five o'clock would be the latest that you could pick up Kakee. Yeah.
Mahalo. Up next, we say up next, and she's already ready, um, is Polly Anagi.
Oh, yeah, so, sorry. Thank you, Miss Bonnie. Uh, Miss Bonnie reminded me, yes, we do um, uh, also offer, um, not only financial aid to our own Kakese, but we do offer what is called four-year-old Kakee Scholar, which is um scholarships given to other preschools for them to attend their preschool. So right now, four-year-old scholars um does support two preschools in our community, which is smaller preschool and Montessori.
Right, that was very important.
Yes, and the application still is online at p s b e dot edu.
All right, thank you for that. And thank you for that reminder. All right, up next, Polly Anagi from Kahale Ona Kakee.
Hello, I'm Polly Anagi. And I'm the executive director at Kahale Ona Kakee preschool in Honoka. Uh, we are located across the street, Pinamama Market, if you're familiar with that area. Um, we're a British food school. Um, it looks like a house in the front, very ominous. It's really big and we have a nice playground and everything. Um, we are licensed um through the state, obviously, and nationally accredited. Uh, we accept children ages two to six and we're licensed for thirty-seven children a day. Uh, we are open year-round, so we go through the summer as well. Uh, we are open seven-thirty to four-thirty. And um it used to be till five-thirty, but as previously mentioned, there was like a teacher shortage. So we now close at four-thirty, but it's still been working out. Um, let's see, we are coming up on a twenty-five-year reunion. So we've been there for almost twenty-five years, coming up uh in September. Uh, they do not need to be potty-trained, uh, so we can take them in and potty-train them there um with us. Um, we enroll year-round as long as we have space available. Um, we're a nonprofit, which says a lot. So when a kid leaves, we need to fill the spot, uh, we need to take the spot. Um, and um, yeah, we have spaces available currently for ages three to five. Uh, the two-year-old group is four. Um, I will leave some information at the front. Um, if you guys wanna contact me or have questions or wanna apply, um, everything can happen online at honokaakee.org. Um, let's see what else. We do accept outside sources of uh funding. So through the state, there's preschool open doors, childcare connections. Uh, we also accept Kakee Okaina and Hawaii Kakee Scholars. Um, currently, we have students that have um funding from all of those sources. Um, thank you for having me.
Up next from Punanaleo O Waimea, the Ohe' Asin.
My name is Kau'ia Asin. I'm the site director for Punanaleo O Waimea. Um, perhaps not as, as popular as some of the other choices here in Waimea. Um, but I would like to say that um Punanaleo O Waimea was founded in July of nineteen ninety-five. And this summer, we're getting ready to celebrate our thirtieth year teaching preschoolers Ma'uka' Ola'ala, in only from home. Um, I affectionately refer to our, our grassroots program and our grassroots movement as uh Hawaiian Rebel Headquarters. We tend to brag about the things that we don't have, um, rather than bragging about the things that we do have. Um, we, we're very proud to be able to do as many things as we do with the little things that we do have. Um, and one of those things that um that we're really proud of actually this year is as we celebrate thirty years of education in the Hawaiian language medium, two of our Kumu on staff are actually two Kumu who were there on the day that the school was founded three years ago. So um, Kumkala Oka'aku, Akima'akau, and Kumupu'alani Kober. They are still there teaching to this day, so we're really proud about that. Um, we certainly uh serve a very um, a very unique um demographic. Our program, as I mentioned, is completely Hawaiian language medium, meaning from the second that the child locks into the door to the second that they leave. Um, ah, oh, yeah, na mea, ha'pa'ua Ma'uka' Ola'ala, ha'afai. So whether the Kakee understands Hawaiian language or not, with the parents, we teach two and a half to five-year-olds in Hawaiian language only. Um, we're there two hundred days of instruction every year from seven-thirty in the morning to three-thirty in the afternoon. We are a very Ohana-based, um, Papahana, I'll explain that in. It's a Hawaiian-based, um, Ohana-based, what is?
Program, program.
Program, oh my. So it's a very Ohana-based, family-based uh program that revolves around the notion of it really does take a village. Um, so we do a lot of family-based projects over the weekends and the breaks and the summers and, and even during the week as well. We do Hawaiian language classes for our families and our parents, and it's actually open to the community on three Thursdays a month. So thanks to you guys, I got to skip that meeting. Um, and the last thing that I wanted to share about our program is, is we have a very comprehensive uh curriculum that was developed specifically for the Hawaiian medium education student. And we call it the P twenty program, which takes the child from the preschool years. And are, currently, we have up to eighth grade at our school. But last year, we graduated four seniors. And so that P through twelve actually continues to the twenty, where um the idea is to move these Hawaiian language students over to UH Hilo, where they continue on for their masters and their doctorate programs. And it is a completely comprehensive curriculum that was developed within the Ahaku Punanaleo and um Ke'ula or Ke'e'ulani at the University of Hawaii Hilo. So really um kind of trying to serve a new demographic of children as families. That we're very excited to be able to, to begin here in Waimea. So mahalo ke'ia hui'ala'uka'ku. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for missing the language class. That's how they're funded. Oh, sure.
Uh, eighty percent of our funding is actually federal, so we have no idea where we're gonna be next year. But I'll tell you this much, is that we're not worried. Because, like I said, Hawaiian Rebel Headquarters. And if a, a lot of the talk is coming from, from our board of directors is let them close the doors and let us figure out how we want to teach our Kakee the way that we want to teach our Kakee. And let's be okay with that. We are okay with eating rocks because no Waimea ka'ku, no Aimea i'ka'ku'ola. We're from Waimea and this is where our life begins and this is where our life ends and this is where we get our life from. So we're gonna. There's a big chunk that comes from uh tuition. Whether it's uh PKS or a state-funded, we have a pre-K program. And then a very small percentage of that comes from uh private donations.
Thank you so much.
We have thirteen Punanaleo campuses across the state.
All right, thank you so much for that. Um, we will definitely hope that your funding is. All right, up next, we have E O E L. Oh, I was gonna say, yeah, E O E L, pre-K Waimea Elementary School. Um, Principal Pipplesheimer and um.
Hello, aloha kaku. I am Principal Pipplesheimer at Waimea Elementary School. And we have, I have with me today Jane Heinz, who is gonna be our preschool teacher next year. I'm really excited. This is our third, well, next, this is our second year um that we had the E O E L program. And we just last year opened it to three-year-olds. So we service three to four-year-olds. Um, and that cutoff birth date is July thirty-first. So that is true for three, four, and kindergartners. So we can take up to twenty and our registration opened on March first. And I will leave the flyers and maybe we can post them on the website as well. We fill up really quickly. Um, and so we're really excited to, to get that going. So twenty seats, three and four-year-olds. Um, we do give priority to um children that are in foster care, children with unstable housing, um, children, multi-language learners, so our E O L population. Um, so really looking at the underserved populations and wanting to have that outreach and opportunity. It is right in the middle of our campus, so it's really nice when we talk about that transition from three-K to kindergarten. They are right in the middle of kindergarten. And so they go in and they're eating um in the cafeteria, they're on our campus. And so it's a really nice and um seamless transition as they work their way to kindergarten. Um, our focus really um from the, the State Department and E O E L is the Executive Office on Early Learning. Um, and that is under the Lieutenant Governor's initiative and how we're able to be funded. And so it's really about. And so it's really about inquiry-based learning, um, and play-based learning, so it's. Um, we're not trying to like pull them to drink the water, but it's really exploratory, giving them those opportunities when they're out on the recess field. To say, you know, how many birds do you see, or how, you know, it's really environmental and. Um, play-based and exploratory-based, um, learning opportunities. Um, I do modify the time slightly because of the traffic and kind of how we're situated. We're almost like landlocked, um, where our elementary school is, so it is an eight fifteen to a two o'clock. Time period, so it runs very similar to a typical, um, public education day for us. And we run on a regular DOE schedule, so we follow, um, the elementary K P five calendar. So we're in school for about, the calendar is a hundred and eighty days. And then with the PD and this and that, we're about a hundred and seventy-three days that we are open from that eight fifteen to two o'clock. One forty-five to a clock.
Thank you.
Twenty-five-year veteran at Waimea Elementary School with some time at the district level, and my love has always been early childhood and. Um, in college, I was elementary, um. My, my bachelor's in the elementary, but my specialization was in early childhood and, um. I've been out of the classroom for about five years now, and I told Tammy, I'm going back into classroom. And I'm so excited to, to be in preschool, really looking forward to it. So, and the best news about ours is it's free.
Fantastic, thank you. Alright, up next, we have Small World Preschool with Pierre.
Well, hello everyone, my name is Pierre. You know, I was born and raised here in Waimea, there's a lot of familiar faces. But anyway, I'm representing Small World Preschool, and we started in nineteen eighty-one. And we're celebrating forty-four years being there. And we're, we're all local women, you know, and so that was a goal of ours, um. Was to be able to contribute to our community, what could we do? And we all worked for a preschool prior to opening up Small World. And when they closed down, we decided to hooey together, and it was really simple back then. We had no knowledge of what it was to even start a business. But it was just, you know, just determined women that wanted to do something here in Waimea. And we knew everybody, because we grew up here in Parker Ranch. And so, you know, we, we did it and we still are here in Waimea. And so we rent a facility from the Saint James Episcopal Church and they've been just wonderful to us. And very, very supportive, so have everybody. And when we first started, we started locally with all the farmers. I think we had one or two doctors, you know, whatever lawyers were here, and of course the Parker Ranch families, and then we went global. You know, Russia, China, Japan. What four local girls would have ever held that vision? I certainly didn't, I just thought we would just be taking care of Waimea. But it, it isn't like that today, so it's definitely grown. So we have a staff of seven, we're licensed by the Department of Human Services. And we can take up to forty-nine children, and they range from the age of two and under seven years old. And we, we open up at seven and we end at five. And, um, let's see what else. Uh, we have three different programs, seven to one, seven to four, and seven to five. So we really wanna meet every parent's needs. And, um, I tell you what, if you wanna stay young, work with Kiki. Stimulate the brain, you know, a lot of times I think I should be sitting on the rug and they run the class. They're so smart, you know, and, um. So what we wanna really do is, is work, you know, it's not just passing them on, but really work on their social, their emotional. And their academics, so that really leave us the transition getting into a, into a, um, regular kindergarten. No matter where they go, it's really, really easy for them. And we've also kept children that didn't make it into kindergarten because of their age, or maybe because they weren't ready. Emotionally or socially, or maybe even academically, we've kept them. And then when they've stayed, it's really made a, a great impact. And being that we're all local women, we really, really work hard on teaching them the things. That they are not privileged to, because they're all like this. They all know how to work the phone, I mean, it's just amazing, because I'm not even mom to that, I have no knowledge. So what we try to do is incorporate what we grew up with, because there's such an influx now. Of so many people moving to Waimea or wherever it may be, without even being educated. On really what our island, our town, our community and our culture really is. And so it's not only learning the ABCs, but it's teaching them what Parker Ranch was about. What the rivers going through your town, the mountains, the beaches, all, all these different things. We took them to Lloyd Casey's farm, they're like, it's smelly. You know, because otherwise they don't get the opportunity to be educated, because it's not always about the academics. It's all those other little things, and I love your show. And it's all those other things that make it so important that these children know and understand. Where they are and what Waimea wants represented and still can represent. But it's up to us as the teachers, and we also even do a lot of cooking. A lot of local stuff, because us ladies, we love to grind. We eat anything under the sun, and a lot of them, I don't know about you guys, organic. Always wanting to feel welcome and give, give them that aloha spirit that we are known for. And, uh, our funding, of course, comes just like everybody else, how you guys all get funded. And we're always so grateful to those parents that come, come to our preschool, that add money to the pot to us. You know, because it's, it's a different town we live in, and they're young and they're wealthy. Yeah, so other than that, um, you know, um, yeah, it's, it's. As ten, another important thing is, is always to set a foundation, your foundation. For every child that goes, I don't care what preschool, that foundation is very important. You know, it's very important, I didn't have the privilege of going to, um, a preschool. But the children today and so on have that privilege today, because there's funding out there. And we've had kids from our preschool that have actually gotten married and they've sent their children. Yeah, so.
Curdy, who's your favorite student?
I gotta share this, and I know my, my five minutes is up. So he's sent this to children, and I have to tell you something, there was a lot of programs that Chris and Dana never. Were privileged to get in, because they didn't qualify, they couldn't prove their Hawaiian heritage and stuff like that. But they would struggle every single year and, and pay that tuition out of their own pocket. And this, this year, thank God, they got blessed, but their third son is in my class. And I can go, I can leave my classroom and I go, Gala, you can run the class. Lady in Hawaiian, he does the, 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 he does the exercise, he does the, um. He, he does everything, he, he does the sharing, he does the weather, he does everything. Well, they say he's got his personality. But you know, you, you just, you just become very, you have a lot of, a lot of aloha for the parents and the kids. That come, come through your doors and you're grateful for, you know, what you can do in your community. So we're not, Barb and I are the only two owners left, and there were four of us, but we're not ready to give up.
Next up, we have from Montessori Education Center of Hawaii, Bonita.
Hi, everybody, it's so nice to be here and I just wanna thank. Chelsea for all they've done for early childhood education in our state and, um. I was thinking obviously all this preschool, but I'm not. We opened in nineteen eighty-four, so we've been here for forty years. And we opened for special needs children, there was not a D O E special needs class. We opened for all the CPS children, um, children who couldn't get into the very expensive private schools. In our community and we had, we had eleven preschools in our community at one, one time. And now we have quite a few less. We actually now, and for the last three years, have had a hundred people on our waitlist, which is horrible. I mean, it's, it's not, I mean, I guess it's great for business, but we feel terrible that their children whose needs are not being met. So we are a Montessori school, I did bring information on Montessori, if anybody's interested, I'll leave it. I have a couple pamphlets and just an overview. Basically, it's the name of a woman who designed an educational experience for children. In that, instead of us being upfront, teaching the children our knowledge. We create an environment within which they can explore and follow their own interests. Become self-motivated, self-disciplined learners, and the whole goal is to, um. Really encourage a love of learning, so it doesn't end in the classroom, the classroom, I mean, the whole world is our classroom. So we basically just want to provide a very stimulating environment, we have five main areas. They start in practical life, which is like everyday living, they do a lot of pouring and spooning and. Uh, water-based jobs, because they do go into sensitive periods for water. I tell parents when they say, are they still pouring? Yes, and isn't that right? Because that's where they develop their concentration, their coordination, their independence. And their self-esteem that make it possible for them to go into those academic areas. We serve children from age two to under eight. Um, we always had, our, our program, Montessori does a multi-age environment, because. Children, I mean chronological age is not a good judgment of developmental. Readiness, so, so what happens, it's so wonderful when you're in a Montessori environment is. The older children are helping the younger, and that helps to really solidify their knowledge. The younger children look up to the older and they're good models. So it's just a really wonderful environment to work in, because they're allowed to be independent, they're allowed to make their own choices. Of course, the job. I mean, we're there enjoying them being there, but most of the job is when they're not there, preparing the environment. Because everything needs to be prepared from simple to complex, from gross motor to fine water. They move from practical life up into sensorial, which is refinement of the senses. And then into math and language, but it's very concrete, because children in preschool years are very concrete. And they need to feel and touch and hold things, and they need to move a lot, but it needs to be movement with purpose. So we might have a set of ten pink cubes, and I give a lesson on new jobs, that's, we have three rules. You have to have a lesson on new work, then you can do it whenever you want. Two, you can't hurt anybody, no hurting words, no hurting touch. And three, you can't touch anybody else's work unless they invite you to, or you ask permission. So it allows them to learn to respect each other's space, to be able to work on their own things, knowing they won't be bothered. To learn how to cooperate with one another, and, um. It's just a wonderful environment to work in, I've been teaching fifty years. And, uh, this is my fortieth year at, at this school. And, um, it's just been a wonderful experience being in Waimea, we started with a group of parents. Um, we didn't have any money, and, um, we had seven committees, they made the furniture. They built the fence, they built the playground, um, we. Ordered a little bit of materials for the first year, we were able to do that, but I think we started this school on three thousand dollars. But that's because we had, we had the Farmers Association, there was, everybody in Waimea came to help us get started. We had a little meeting at the school, um, before we opened, just to see, because there were so many preschools, I thought we can't possibly need another preschool. But we had a lot of people asking me, so the meeting, we didn't advertise, because we didn't wanna take business from anybody. Although, we had board members from several schools saying, competition's good. And I do believe it's good, I'm very excited to hear we're gonna get another preschool, I hope pretty soon. And, um, it's wonderful to have choices in our communities, so I think we're, from eleven, we're down to six. Preschools, I know Hilo, there's a lot of fewer Montessori schools, it's not an easy job. I, it's easy for me, but it's second nature, but it's hard to find young people that really wanna work that hard. So, I'm very excited about being in this profession. And finding people that wanna even have a free education. I mean, it's, they're gonna get it for, it's tough, it's. It's like Maynard De Cresp, do you remember? So I'm from math and language, we have the cultural area, and in the cultural areas, all the sciences, because we love the earth. It's a wonderful time to introduce land and water forms and islands and continents. Really, the curriculum goes up through third grade, and it's there on the shelf where they're taking. So our job as a guide, we're not really a teacher, they're teaching themselves. They come in already knowing to walk, talk, most of them can use the bathroom, that's also not a requirement of our school. We feel like once they get there, they'll learn, they learn more from their peers than they ever learned from us. So, it's such, I would invite you all to come and visit. It's a wonderful place to be, and there's a happy hum, it's not quiet. But it's very productive noise, so, I didn't finish the pink hues. Yes, school hours were there from seven thirty to four, we were there till five, five, excuse me. Up until COVID and we got kind of spoiled during COVID. And I can't get anyone to work. So I am actually, at my age, I won't tell you how old I am, but I open and I close and I'm cleaning. Because we're looking for new staff right now, so, um, we're very fortunate to have, I mean, another paying Montessori teacher with us this year. And one more coming next year, so that hopefully I might face a little bit, although the question is, my love, as Angela knows, I'm the director, but I. Rarely go in the office, I luckily have an office manager that helps with all that paperwork. But we're open, um, to all children and, um, we really want a diverse population, we want them to know. I mean, even on that health form that said race, and I always wanna put human. We learn at an early age to respect and love one, one another, no, no matter where we're from. And I think that was the one lesson I learned that first five years before the DOE opened. Special ed, and then we've had to fight for those kids, because, and we've been able to serve lots of special needs children, but. We learned more from the special needs children than they probably learned from us. So, we all learn from one another, and it's nice to respect the children as individuals. Who allow them to do the things that make them happy, and I think that's why they love it. I mean, they cut their own carrots and apples for their snack, they can have snack whenever they're hungry, they're learning to. To understand their body needs, um, they do have to, they serve their own snack, but they also wash their own dishes. And they sweep their crumbs, and they sweep the floor, and they love doing it. So if, we have a rule, we never do for them what they can do for themselves. And my motto for the teachers who come in, the new ones, there's a big spill, I say. The child can learn, can handle it, so that's the hardest thing for the grown-ups, is to just let the kids do it. The child can learn, can handle it, so that's the hardest thing for the grownups, is to just let the kids do it, they don't know. And if they're new, I say just ask the child to give you a lesson, because they know more than you do right now. Most grownups wanna come in and tell the kids what to do, so that's hard to, for people. But my motto that is a Montessori quote is, the secret of childhood is the secret of life itself. So I absolutely love my job and I am so grateful to serve the community and to feed the children, they're just. Again, just from heaven, and they're loving and trusting.
All right, as Bonnie alluded to, there is a new preschool and that will be opening in Waimea, Parker School. I asked headmaster Stephen Dunn if he wanted to say anything, and he said no. So, um, we have time for a question or two, does anyone have any questions? All right, well, I, thank you for that, so we appreciate all of your support, thank you so much for being here, thank you to our educators. Drive safely, everybody, our next meeting is Thursday, May first, it's a hybrid meeting from five-thirty to seven. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we'll have a little bit of extended time with our police, with our county council members. And we will be joined by Lisa Mura from the county who will discuss property taxes, a question we've gotten a lot about. So we are T B C, I just need final confirmation, it's a tentative, yeah, but I'm not committing yet. Yeah, property taxes, you're like, this room isn't gonna hold property taxes, as much as we love it. So, uh, mahalo for that, yes, Heidi.
Just a comment, I wanted to thank the county for supporting our children, it's really important.
Mahalo, everybody, thank you. Take a cookie on the way out, David and Scott, I bought them at Costco, please eat the cookies, we would die. Um, there's also coffee available. Thank you, thank you so much.